Planning Commission meeting together for, to order for Garfield Township. And the thing is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, the first item on there is a roll call, so Annisee back there, you want to take a roll for us?
Augustinelli.
Here.
Fine.
Here.
Robertson.
Here.
He good?
Here.
Budge?
Here.
Racine?
Here.
And McManus?
Here, all right. Our next item is public comment. We do have, um, public comment at the beginning and then again at the end of the meeting. Uh, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so at this point, if you have anything you'd like to address the board, now it's time to come forward and state your name and address and let us know what you have on your mind. And it is usually the case, nobody's beaten a trail to the microphone, so we'll close public hearing, or public comment, excuse me. And, uh, next item is review and approval of the agenda and any conflicts of interest, now will be time to address those.
Motion the agenda be approved?
Support.
Motion made and supported to approve the agenda. Any further comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the approval of the minutes from our, March 27th, this was our joint meeting with the town board, uh, so you have those minutes in your packet. Any questions, corrections, or comments on those?
Hope you approve the minutes.
Support. Motion made and supported to approve the minutes for our March 27th Planning Commission meeting, our joint session. Any further comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, correspondence, John, I see a couple of them on desk.
Yeah, there's a couple items on, uh, your desk this evening. There's an email that we received this, uh, today from the Watershed Center regarding the conceptual review that's on, later on your agenda. Also, uh, there is a invitation to a community engagement session for, uh, trails, uh, for the regional, uh, active transportation plan from Networks Northwest, and Steve will touch base on that a little bit under our staff report.
Okay, maybe, all right, thank you. All right, next item is reports. Uh, Molly, anything from the town board this evening?
Well, just to let you know that people still want to be in Traverse City, we have 27 applicants for our building department manager and we still have a week to go, or two.
Wow, 27?
Yeah.
And that's for Carl's replacement, right?
Carl's replacement, yeah.
How much does it pay?
That it, or?
That's it.
Is it? Okay. All right, uh, Bob, anything from the ZBA?
Yes, sir, we, uh, had a meeting for a request for a front yard setback of 16 feet on Cass Court, which is on the east side of Silver Lake, and it was tabled for lack of enough information. So it'll be back at our next meeting.
Okay. All right. Parks and Rec, anything, Chris?
I can't help myself. I was in Jamaica, man.
Oh.
Seen anything happen at the meeting?
Uh, but we did have a meeting, uh, there were no action items, mostly just, uh...
Not in Jamaica.
Yeah, the meeting was in Garfield, sadly. Uh, no action items, but just some updates on, uh, we had, uh, we have a process for, uh, we were recommended for the grant for the accessible trail of commons and through correspondence with, uh, DNR, we've kind of laid out our, uh, steps we need to take and things we're already working on, and, uh, the board approved Gordy Frazier's contract to do the engineering for it, uh, so the wheels are in motion for that, um, but at some point later this year, uh, there will be a project agreement when we actually receive the funds, so, uh, more on that later.
Okay, thank you. John, joint planning commission?
Nothing to report, no meetings since my last report on that.
Next week, though.
I think there will be one next week.
Is that here or downtown?
It's at the governing center.
At the governing center, okay. All right. Staff, what do you have under staff reports?
Uh, you have our, uh, monthly report that was also presented to the township board yesterday evening, and Steve has a couple, please.
Yeah, so the item on your desk is about the Networks Northwest, uh, pub engagement, uh, session, so they're doing a active transportation plan, and it's a partnership of Networks Northwest, the regional planning agency for Northwest Michigan, uh, Northeast Michigan Council of Governments, uh, their counterpart for the Northeast, uh, Lower Peninsula, and MDOT, so it's like a very kind of 10,000-foot view, uh, look at active transportation, um, and they've been trying to do, uh, some open houses. They did one in Blair in the fall, uh, and they were working on some non-motorized projects down there, so since we're also doing our master plan and have a non-motorized plan and a master street plan as part of it, uh, it was kind of a good time to maybe coincide, uh, we can talk later maybe under other business, but it might be good for us to, if not a full, like, open house on the master plan like we've done, uh, earlier this year, even just putting up our own, uh, non-motorized plan map while they're doing that, and we can kind of coincide, work with them, uh, but, uh, we can discuss that more, yeah, if we want to, but that, uh, Networks Northwest will be here, uh, just before our study session, uh, in a couple weeks.
Okay.
And then, uh, it's in our written report, but, uh, John and I are going to be attending the National Planning Conference in Minneapolis, uh, we're, uh, heading out on Friday, and we'll be there Saturday, Sunday, Monday for the national conference. I have not been to one in, I think, since 2013, um, so I'm excited, and I used to live in St. Paul, Minnesota, so, uh, get to visit some old haunts as well, uh, and we'll hopefully bring back some good, uh, information and kind of best practices, see what planners around the country are, uh, dealing with. I know there's, people are dealing with housing, people are dealing with, uh, all kinds of, uh, issues all around the country, so hopefully with some best practices we can learn from.
All right. Thank you. All right, well, we move on to unfinished business, um, item A under unfinished business is Plan Department Report 2024-24, the, um, 3066 North Garfield Special Use Permit. Tonight we're, uh, reviewing the findings of fact, so John, I don't know if you want to...
Yes.
...make some comments on that?
So this is for a, uh, proposed, uh, 20-unit apartment building located at 3066 North Garfield Road, just south of South Airport Road. This, uh, property is zoned commercial general, or general commercial, and it is, uh, allows for commercial district housing developments via a special use permit. Uh, you see, the initial application occurred last fall, uh, that was, uh, paused for a time period to, uh, look at the language in the commercial district housing development section of the ordinance that was adjusted, and then the, uh, project was resumed earlier this year. Public hearing was held, um, last month, and now this is for, uh, your consideration in terms of findings of fact for, uh, approval of the project.
All right. Um, the findings are in your packet, um, they all appear to have been met. Anybody have any questions on any of those? Go ahead, John.
I just had one question on, um, number six, on page seven, the, uh, criteria talks about adequate public-private infrastructure services such as streets, water, sewage, and it looks like, uh, staff suggests that was met, and it mentions the water and sewer and, and other things, doesn't talk about streets, and I don't know that I personally have any issue, but I recalled in reading something from last month when I was gone, but it looked like you had gotten a contact from somebody about the traffic on Dual Road, and I wonder if you could fill me in on...
Yeah, so, it was a business owner, he's a few doors down on Dual Road on the south side. He was, not so much actual Dual Road itself, but just, uh, the relationship of Dual Road at that intersection with South, uh, with Garfield Road, um, and I think probably what, part of the problem is, or the, the concern, he didn't have any issues with the actual development, he just had issues with the traffic, and I think part of the, is its relationship to that intersection of Garfield and South Airport Road, particularly, you know, for instance, like, the mornings, there's a lot of flow, traffic flow headed north, so there's backup, and so trying to get into Dual Road, uh, it might be a little bit different, the more I thought about it, that, so, as a business owner, people trying to get into Dual Road might be different than if you lived on Dual Road and were maybe exiting in the morning, particularly if you were headed northbound, might not be quite the issue, so it's a little inverse than if you actually work on Dual Road, but, again, it's, I, it's the nature of that vicinity, I don't know there's really much that we can do, but, um, like I said, he wasn't, uh, didn't have any issues with the actual development.
So it didn't raise any, any serious concerns among anybody, uh, staff or any of the commissioners? Okay. Thanks, that was my only question.
Your staff, have any questions on the, excuse the findings?
Well, I was kind of wondering more about that they're doing everything they can to keep that quiet, they're, uh, using extra insulation, but I still think that they need to use the triple pane windows to, to make it, if they're going to do all that sound control, they need to do something with the windows, is what I think. Otherwise, you're going to have a problem with that noise, and it's such a, so close to that car wash. I don't know what you guys think about that. They got all these papers on what they're doing with the building, with the walls, he brought that wall in and showed us all that, so he might as well do something with the glass, and, like, triple pane's my answer, but, uh, you guys, I don't want to hold your project up, so if they come up with something, and if you, you or the building department can just add to the fact that it's helping, or it's going to help, or something.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're referring to that Part Three compatibility on, it's basically on page five of nine, where in the report, there, it's part of the commercial district housing developments, where it says, "Applications shall describe measures which will be taken to mitigate common commercial impacts such as noise, light, and night time operations on the multi-family, in, uh, multi-family projects," so it's, it's, it's basically protecting the residents that are there, so it's a little inverse of what we typically are dealing. They did provide those materials, but, um, I, you know, I don't know, uh, I guess it's up to the Planning Commission, uh, their comfort level is on that, um, is they're okay with that. I did, uh, I did not have the building official or, or building inspector look at that information, but that might have been something that we could have done.
Well, I appreciate the fact that they're doing extra with the building part of it, the insulation and the drive, well, they had that, um, with a sample and all that stuff, but I just feel like the, if they ain't doing anything with the windows, they didn't really accomplish anything, they wasted their, they threw their money away on doing the other stuff, so I guess if you could get us, opinion from the building department, if, or, I, I don't know how to address it, but, uh, I'd like to have somebody look at it a little further, but I don't want to delay them either.
Um, I don't, do you want to hear from the applicant on that?
I guess if they have it quick, because he, well, the last time when I brought it up, he acted like he would do something about it, and I think that, uh, triple pane is the, the way to go, but...
Sure. Um, we don't have any windows...
Sorry, but just go ahead and say your name.
I'm sorry, yeah, Sean McCurdle, and, um, we don't have any windows, which we didn't talk about at the last meeting, on the west side of the building, so that faces Garfield, there are no windows there.
How about the south?
South side with faces the car wash, we did eliminate, there were windows that were in the bedrooms, the bedrooms both, they both point out to, or have a shared wall with the courtyard, or a deck on the second floor, and so we did eliminate those windows, um, to increase more of the sound transmission control rating, um, on that back wall there. Um, I don't, I didn't do any studies or research as to what, what happened to a sound transmission control rating with an enhanced glass that had, uh, sound deadening qualities in it, so I don't have any information or data on that tonight. Um, we did look at the window manufacturer that we do have, they have a sound deadening glass, I don't believe it's, uh, triple pane, Joe, but it's a sound deadening, it's not a soundproofing, but it's a sound deadening glass.
Could you at least use that?
We could look into it, yeah, I, I don't know, again, I don't know what the, the exact factual, you know, benefit would be for the sound transmission control rating to that wall assembly, because it is, it's a, it's a complete assembly, but, uh, definitely will look into it, yeah, for sure. Again, I was trying to make the point before is that we don't want to make or build an inferior building, because I don't want the residents to move out. We don't want to inherit that problem, we don't want to borrow that, that trouble that might come from any, uh, outside noise, on any side of the building, right? So, we definitely would look into it.
Okay.
Because it is our, absolutely our intent, it wasn't just, uh, my words, but it's actually our intent, it's our desire, um, to make sure that we build a building that's elite, that's a better building, because the residents that stay there, again, they're not tenants, they're residents, um, we want them to reside, and the one surefire way to have them move out and to experience that pain on us is to have a building that's inferior or noisy, whether it's from outside in or from vertical surfaces coming down, you know, I, I don't, I know there's some level of expectation, they may hear your neighbor walk above you, right, but...
Yeah, that's, that comes with the, with, uh, part of it, but I was just trying to protect that car wash, so they don't have future problems with people complaining about their, they've been there all along, and so, I guess, I'm, I would be comfortable if you could just share what you were going to do with staff, and you guys make the final decision, I don't want to delay their project, if...
We would, uh, with additional information they provide, we can share that with the building department, have them review that, and, uh, I apologize for one thing, there was originally some building elevations, and I see they're not in your packet, um, this evening, but there were some bu, building elevations to show you the, the layout of those, um, units that do, uh, face the car wash, so this is a, a standard requirement, um, in special use, uh, for commercial district housing development, so, in essence, it's something that needs to be addressed, and how they address it, if it, if for some reason there becomes any, an issue, that would be responsible to the, uh, project developers for this apartment building, and wouldn't be the responsibility of the car wash, so technically, if there is an issue and there's complaints, it's really up to the, the developer of this, uh, project here that would have to address that under the special use permit, so we would held them to that Part Three of that, uh, the section 725 that deals with commercial district housing. So it's important for us to respond the best we can, based on the information they provide, if we think that's going to work, and if there are issues, then that's something that's going to, we can revisit the special use permit if need be.
Does that need to be tweaked in, in terms of this motion about approving the SUP?
Only from the standpoint that if there is additional, uh, information provided on the building materials, the, the special use permit and the ability to, uh, meet the requirements of the special use permit, that's something that the ordinance allows for you are, allows the township already to do that process, so if there are, because we deal with that all the time, if there's issues, we go back to whatever the standard is in the ordinance, particularly in this case, these are supplemental regulations, uh, specifically to commercial district housing, so that would be a standard that they would, I mean, part of it is like, how do you determine what is that level of, uh, protection in terms of noise and other issues like light and so forth, but that's a standard that still always applies to the, that special use permit regardless, it's something, as long as it's in the ordinance, it's still pertains to this project.
I'm not sure, um, that, you know, I, when I left here, I thought about, okay, did I convey the message that I wanted to convey, and did the commissioners, were they able to process, or was I able to communicate in a way that was understood as far as what we've done differently with that wall assembly? And so I kind of replayed it a lot of times in my head, and I, I thought, in that short amount of time, and then I was, it was a little awkward, because I was trying to show the wall assembly, and really what was in that wall assembly from 25 feet away, and then I, the microphone didn't go down, and so, um, I think it's important to note that what we've done on that, on the south and west wall, is we've taken the wa, the, the assembly that you would ordinarily put between floors with the RC channel, which is a material that holds the drywall off the framing, so that there's no reverberation through the wood and into the drywall, and we've taken that back wall and we've eliminated, like, BAT insulation, which is fairly typical for an exterior wall in a multi-family project, and we've replaced it with a, a blown-in bib system, like a fiberglass, a densely filled, uh, fiberglass, not foam, but fiberglass. And I, wasn't my word, it's, it's just what they refer, it's, it's what they call elite FX board, that is usually reserved for, uh, hotel assemblies, and so we've added that, and then we put just a traditional drywall layer over that, so, we understand that, uh, the combination of all those materials all increases the STC, the Sound Transmission Control Rating, and we also understand that there's literally hundreds of different wall assemblies that produce different STC ratings. We were pretty proud of taking those practices that you would ordinarily reserve from unit to unit, and from floor to floor, wall to wall, and apply it to an exterior wall assembly. Um, super proud of, like I said, how we installed the windows, um, and I guess the conversation, just from a building science standpoint, that I would want to investigate or talk about, or, as if we're going to change that wall assembly that we've proposed, I would want to know, you know, what those changes are actually going to do to that Sound Transmission Control Rating, because we want it to be something where the residents are happy with it, so, we were proud of it, and it was taking practices that you would ordinarily, ordinarily use between floors and, uh, apply it to an outside wall, so, we felt really good about it, and, uh, felt like it's going to do a great job in helping to...
Excuse me.
...control the sound transmission from the outside and the inside.
Well, because we also verify it, too.
Yeah.
It's important.
Yeah, so the percentages that I gave you were just that, that they, you can increase the sound transmit, trans, transmission control rating by, um, in some cases 30% for the hat channel, in some cases, I think closer to 50% for using that elite FX board, so...
And then open the window, I don't, I don't get your point, what, you got the window that's, you threw in that, you opened that hole, you put a hole in that wall, and you put a window in it, so you opened it up, so you can have all the wall you want, you could go up here and talk for the next three hours about how good your wall is, I'm worried about your window.
Sure. But Joe, you got to give some credit to the fact that that window itself would have the ability to reduce, reduce noise, I mean, just the window itself is not, it's, if, if I'm on the outside talking through the window, that window itself, as it is right now, is not a sieve for noise, I mean, it will actually, will help to control noise coming through that.
So you'll have the, you'll have the building department look at that as part of the special use permit?
So what is it, are you going to supply in addition to this, or what, I did, are we looking, is, is it changing any of the, the window specifications or anything like that, or, I mean, I think that's what Joe was talking about.
I think he needs to put some, a little better window in there than just your everyday house window, that he said he was going to put a U26, or U factor of 26 in there, which is an everyday window, and I would like to see him get something in there that's got a little bit, you can have all the wall you want, and, but you can put a hole in it, what does it do?
Joe, just for the record, it's not, it's an Energy Star rated window, it's not an everyday window, and it's a U value .2...
Well, everybody uses them, no.
What's that?
It's just your regular, you were using a regular window that every, uh, everybody's using the... So anyway, if you could have somebody, uh, the building department, or if they could get a little better window in there, that's going to help with soundproofing, I'd feel...
I don't know, sure. I think it's in the glass.
But I think it would be prudent to deal with it at this point versus dealing with complaints in the future, I mean, that's what we're trying to do, it, it just makes it for difficult process when, if it's already established and we come back, so now is the time to address the issues, and I know it's kind of hard to determine it at this point, but, um, so just, put that out there for the Planning Commission, so...
Motion, proposal?
Yeah, so, I, we don't want to have the windows on the south side of the building hold up the approval of the project, which is what we're talking about.
Well, no, what we're doing is, they would...
Am I right, is that, is it the south side, that's, we're talking about the south, because there's no, there are no ones on the west side, that's where the noises from Garfield would be generated.
Yeah, we're talking, and, and I think the main concern is that there's the, the dryers from the vacuum, or, excuse me, the dryers for the car wash as they exit towards Garfield, but then there's also, uh, individual vacuums there on the north side of that building.
Sure.
So it's just basically the south side.
South side.
Right.
So...
And so, what the Planning Commission is, would be doing is adding an additional condition of the approval subject to the, so you'd have to provide the additional information, we would have the building official review that and make comment to ensure that it does provide some increased amount of noise protection for those units that would have that, that, so it'd basically be a condition of approval.
That the building department would review?
Correct.
Okay. At the time of plan review?
No, it would be, it, it's before, we would want it as part of the special use permit, before you go through land use permit and building permits.
Sure. Would there be an additional meeting here?
I don't anticipate it unless there's some issue where it does need to return, but...
Sure.
So, it would be a condition, so the condition has to be met prior to land use permit.
Understood. Understood.
Sean, can I have a...
Sure.
Joe Lucricchio, Sean's partner in the project, um, we did not ignore what Mr. Robertson talked about and asked about, we did investigate it for sure. There are some sound deadening characteristics that can be added to the glass on that south side of the building. It's not necessarily triple pane, but there's like a film that has very good sound deadening, uh, qualities, and so we can present that information, um, with a, with a revised submission specifically on that portion of the building, but like Sean said, the west side, south side has essentially, uh, one window there, um, the north side, of course, has, is a duplicate of the south side where the units are and the patios are and whatnot, but that's on the other side from the car wash, so, it didn't, you know, it didn't fall on deaf ears what, what was said, and so we, you know, we can, we can propose something that I think will make everybody comfortable, but I do want to stress that the measures we took with that sound deadening wall, and, and I will take a little bit of an issue to say that, you know, you put a, a window in that wall and everything goes away, that's not true. In any kind of building situation, windows are a sound barrier, and they are sound rated along with, you know, energy efficiency ratings, so, that combined with that wall, it's, it's a big deal, that wall system is very expensive, but it's like Sean said, it's either between units or it's between floors, and that air gap you create with that RC channel is a big deal with killing sound, and so, we did take measures, we will do something to address the glass, but, um, and, and that, that south wall will provide as much as we can, you know, as we can do with, within reason, and with what we did with that sound deadening already, I think it's a big deal, so, I appreciate it.
Thank you. You comfortable with that, Joe?
Yes.
Okay. You have some wording on that, John?
Yeah, I'm kind of working on something right now.
As John's doing that, anybody have any other comments or questions on any other conditions?
Yeah, one question, Joe, just, do we have any standards? Um, we have standards on lighting, we have standards on other things, do we have any standards on sound and gl, windows and glass and all that? Or just, they can come in and say, "We're going to put this film on the window, and it's going to improve it by 1%, 5%?" What, do we have a number that we're shooting for, or we're just going to have Carl review it and decide if it's better, or...
I'd imagine there's building code requirements.
Most of our, most of our standards are, are developments, the impact they have outside of our development, you know, this, the, the lighting and the, and those types of things, so it's a little, it's, it's the flip side of that, you're trying to protect this development from the outside, so, it's kind of an odd situation, so...
Yeah.
Uh, I doubt that there's a standard for that, unfortunately.
Well, I'm agreeing with Joe that the glass would be a good idea, but on the other hand, we've got a applicant here, how do we know when he's met the...
Yeah.
I think what we're trying to look for is something that would be in addition to what standard would be applied in a standard apartment building, I don't, we don't know to what extent, I mean, the way the standard is written, it's pretty much wide open, I think we're just looking for something greater than what typically would be done, uh, I don't think it has to be anything extensive, there, you know, there, like I said, about the special use permit, which runs with that facility there, that there are, does become complaints, it's really going to be on the owners of that building to address... complaints, it's really going to be on the owners of that building to address the complaint, it's not going to be the responsibility of the adjacent businesses. So it's, if anything, this provides us with some assurance, we don't know if it's, you know, if it's going to work 100% or not, but it does meet the, in my mind, is enough to meet the requirements of the ordinance. So I would suggest something as a condition, something to the effect that says the applicant is to provide additional sound deadening materials for the windows on the south-facing units subject to review by the township building department, is something of that nature.
You guys comfortable with that? Okay. So they're comfortable with that, that would be a condition of the second motion, though, correct?
Correct.
Yep. Number six.
Yep.
That would be number six.
It'd be number six on the second motion, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion that the findings affect for application SUP 2023-08 as presented in planning department report 2024-24, and being made a part of this motion be adopted.
Support. All right, motion made and supported that the findings of fact for SUP 2023-08 as presented in the report 2024-24 be adopted. So any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, then I'll make the motion that application SUP 2023-08 be approved, subject to the following conditions, it's now 1 through 6, so it would be as amended, as indicated in planning department report 2024-24.
Do you want to read into the, for the record?
And that added condition is the applicant is to provide additional sound deadening materials for the windows on the south-facing units subject to review by the township building department.
Okay, did you get enough?
Support for that motion?
Support.
Motion made and supported that application SUP 2023-08 be adopted. The following conditions, now 1 through 6, as read into the record, and as indicated in planning department report 2024-24. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so now we're out to new business, and we're under new business item A, which is planning department report 2024-25, and it is the Goetheer Site Conceptual Review, so.
We have Steve present this.
Thank you, John. So this is, it's coming to the planning commission as a conceptual review for multi-family project on the Goetheer site at 31 and McCray Hill Road. Some of the background that's in the report was this site was brought to planning commission a couple of years ago for a rezoning of the property, there was a split zoning of highway commercial and ag that we ended up rezoning the entire parcel to R3, multi-family residential. So it kind of summarized some of the discussion from a couple of years ago. Also, part of the reason it's coming as a conceptual review first is applicants have discussed with the town board about looking at the potential of using a brownfield tax agreement financing, which would also involve the Grand Charles County Brownfield Authority. This was part of, there was some new legislation that was passed and signed into law in 2023 that was kind of new tools or incentives that the state is allowing for housing. So this is the first, I think, application we've seen, or project that we've seen using that specific tool, at least in the township, there may have been others in the region. So part of why it was coming here as a conceptual review first was that if that, if the board ends up having their discussions, that if it comes here, you have seen it by the time it comes for a formal application, if it gets that far, so. With it being a conceptual review, there's just the one, there's some information, but only the one kind of site plan sheet. So there would be other details that would need to be provided with a full application, but they have a site layout, some details provided and a narrative. And then also on your desks was the correspondence we received from Watershed Center this morning. When we rezoned that property, there was discussion on that there's these, part of also why we agreed that it made sense to rezonate was the two kind of creeks tributaries to Miller Creek, it created sort of a narrow buildable area, so there would need to be wetland and stream delineation to determine kind of the exact nature of that buildable area, but that it made it less conducive for things like commercial or other things. So it made sense to rezonate to R3, and it is now, but evaluating a full project, if we got that, would need that detail to determine that. But you have a conceptual site layout before you.
All right. A little snowy.
Will Bartlett, one of the principals from Keel Capital, the applicant, here with Bob Verchev from Gosling Zuback, so if there are any engineering questions, I'm going to defer to Bob. But thank you for the overview, Steve. As described in your packet and the narrative, we're looking at 154 unit development on this site, split into four buildings. As Steve mentioned, you know, there's some challenging topography on the site, it's almost a 19-acre site, but only six to seven acres of buildable area running through the center, which is where, you know, the upland area is where we have all the buildings and parking shown. It's going to be a combination of studio apartments, one-bedroom apartments, and two-bedroom apartments, really catering to that workforce component. As Steve mentioned, there's some new tools at the state level that support workforce housing, kind of looking at the core people that power our communities, you know, defined as 80, people that earn between 80 and 120% of area median income, or AMI. So it's, you know, supporting people that work at the township, or nurses, firefighters, teachers, et cetera. So we're really excited about the project, and, you know, to the extent there are more questions, I'll let Bob address this, but I, you know, briefly had the opportunity to review the email that came in, and, you know, we obviously want to comply to the fullest extent with the ordinances regarding the streams and wetlands, and that's our intent. I would note in that email, it made it seem like the wetland detention, not the, sorry, the stormwater detention area was on the side of the hill, which it is not. It's at the bottom, so it's a very logical spot for, for that detention pond to go. So happy to answer any questions. Again, harkening back to something that Steve mentioned, we're going through the brownfield process right now, really excited to deliver more workforce housing that's really desperately needed in this area. But clearly, one of, you know, we would need a special use permit to, to go forward with this higher density option on this site, and so I try to live my life saying, yes is the best answer, a quick no is the second best answer, and a long no or a maybe is really bad. So, you know, we don't want to push too far down that, that brownfield process or other if we aren't going to be successful here, but I hope we will be, and happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I mean, this piece came to us, if you remember, the front was zone commercial, the back ag, and, you know, I think we envisioned something like this as being the best use for it. We wanted to dissuade commercial development there, and thought that housing and envisioned, I don't know really what we envisioned, but something like this on that site. So it follows what I think our plan was, it follows the master plan pretty well, too, right, is what we're working on, so.
Yeah, one thing I would say from the packet is the current future land use is ag, but I saw in the master plan, the future land use got changed in the new map to high-density residential.
Yeah, I think when we were looking at this before, when we were doing the rezonate, we thought it made a good transition, office uses, multi-family, et cetera, really good as kind of a step down from where we have the commercial to the north with the Sam's Club, PUD, the Cracker Barrel and everything, and stepping it down to the south made a lot more sense to do something like multi-family as a transition, so.
So on a site like this, what would we be counting density as? Would we go to the six some acres, or would we stay? I know we did Fox, was it Fox Run or one of them over there was the same way, they had a lot of wetlands, so.
We would do it the full.
We would do the full 18?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, similar to also across the street, that Marengo 31, which is behind the Baymont, large parcel, small buildable area based on the wetlands, we did it for the full parcel. In essence, it kind of creates some really good natural areas or buffers, because those can't be built, they're wooded and so forth, so it kind of actually creates a fairly nice site from that standpoint, but yeah.
Well, it's just conceptual review, and conceptually, it sounds like a good idea to me, and I see you've got a real rough site plan, and we're not reviewing that tonight in any detail, but just with the ideas of what you've got shown there, just one question crossed my mind about the first building that you've got labeled building one. I don't know if it's physically possible or desirable to conceivably flip where the building is and where the parking lot is, which would then make the parking a little less visible for everybody going, zipping up and down on 3137, because the woods to the north would pretty well block out of view of that. But if the site doesn't allow it, I get it, but if it would allow it, that might be a something that's worth you're considering. And it sounds, Will, like you're saying that those, wherever the stormwater basins are, they're not on slopes, so at some point, if the process keeps going, you might want to visit some more with Heather at the Baykeeper and invite her to take a look and show her where you're really planning on putting them, so that she doesn't end up thinking that they're on a slope if they're not on a slope.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's tough to see, because again, like you mentioned, this is a preliminary plan, but we do show the, these are two, sorry, these are one-foot grade lines, so you can see to the west of that, where the detention area is shown, you can see where that hill is, where the lines are really close to one another, and then where the detention area is shown, it's a pretty flat area, as you can see, there are not many of those lines. And that reaches the end of my, like, engineering knowledge, looking at how close the lines are to one another. But, but yes, happy to, happy to do what we need to do to, to comply with the ordinance and do the right thing. And we will look at, that's something, too, I mean, the, the site is challenging from a topography perspective, but once you get further in on the site and you have some of those views north and west, it's really beautiful. So it would be nice to feature those more. So we'll, we'll look at the area, which is currently building one, and see if we can do something along the lines of what you were saying.
And that was the only building I was even wondering about, because it seems like the other buildings aren't going to be very visible, if at all, from the road, they're going to be back in the property, but building one probably will be, so.
Right. Right. We will look at that for sure.
And a full application would, as all applications, would also be reviewed by Gordy Frazier as well, the township engineer for stormwater, which would be a resource for that. That's often sort of tied to, there's always that standard language in conditions, as in the one we just did, where it's, where we always say they're subject to review, and so these can be ongoing, sometimes they're finished up after the planning commission, before the land use permits issued, but it might be recommended also to the applicant to start the stormwater review earlier in the process, if that might lead to some design details to firm those up, it might be good to start, they can go concurrently with the planning commission's review of that, if you end up submitting an application.
Any other questions or comments?
Couple of thoughts, just to add to what John said, you know, I think that there's some valuable concerns in the Baykeeper's email, and Bob, I trust that you guys will work hard. It does look challenging, given the changes in elevation, to take the stormwater from up here and move it all down to the lower area and detain it appropriately and, you know, manage water quality, but, you know, I'm sure you guys are up to the challenge, and I look forward to getting a set of plans from you guys that hopefully is something that knock the socks, knock the socks off the Baykeeper, that's hard to do. But she's right, this is, you know, the headwaters of two creeks that are, you know, really important to watershed through Garfield Township, and, you know, I would encourage you to, you know, recognize that some extra expense is probably going to need to be invested in the stormwater management plan and that infrastructure above and beyond what you might normally see in other projects because of that. And then the other thing is that I think in the zoning, rezoning review, we talked about different concerns about the entrance to a development here. And, you know, I certainly would defer to MDOT, but, you know, I think that that's a significant challenge, given how there's three different intersections there that are all kind of offset, and we're adding one, I mean, it's not really an intersection now, but you put, what was your number, 248 units? Is that right?
154.
154.
Yeah, see, don't trust me with the number. Thank you. It's still, it's a lot of units, and it's going to create, you know, so I would explore that, that traffic aspect, the intersection aspect early, because you're talking about going after those brownfield dollars, and I'd hate to see you get hung up on that issue.
Yeah, so we did take a look at traffic, because, you know, we've, we've heard some of the conversations similar to what you just mentioned on an entrance there in 31, and so we took a look at what MDOT suggests, and their numbers are based off of directional trips, at peak hour directional trips. And so, you know, they, they lay out a table, and I can, I can send this around to the commissioners, but they outlined a table where 245 apartment units creates 100 peak hour directional trips, which is really the threshold that they view as 245 units, whether a traffic study is warranted or not. And so if just do the pure, you know, pure math, at 154 units, that would imply about 60 peak hour trips. And then, looking at our unit sizes in particular, our average unit size does skew smaller than the average apartment project, that's partially because on balance, our one-bedroom units are slightly smaller than maybe some in the competitive set, like Chelsea Park West or Liv Arbor. It's also because we have, we don't have any three-bedroom units. So our average unit size is about 700 square feet across the entire project, whereas Liv Arbor and Chelsea Park West are closer to 900. So, you know, one could, one could ask, you know, I think rationally say, we are going to have less people per unit because our units are smaller. And if you've applied, you know, that math, it would imply 47 directional trips if you adjusted for unit size. So something that we've definitely thought about and we're cognizant of, I think the rub is, I would love to have some other secondary release valve to the traffic if we could, but the topography on this site makes that impossible. So 31 is really the only option, unfortunately. But I think when you look at the data, I don't think it will be a, definitely something to be studied, but I don't think it will create a huge traffic jam.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm concerned about the traffic jam so much as the interaction of the intersections in that particular location. So I think I heard you say at the very beginning of that last bit, that your indication is that MDOT is unlikely to require a traffic study for the number of trips that this development would generate.
Correct. I think MDOT, and Bob, you can speak more to this if you understand it better, but they would not require a traffic study, it would fall to a lower threshold. It would fall to a lower threshold because we don't hit that 245 unit count.
So I'll defer to our planners and just suggest, again, this is pre-application, so I think we need to make sure that the township requires whatever level of traffic study and, and I believe, I don't know if we have extra latitude to ask, go Steve?
We have a section for traffic impact reports and it does apply to any major development, special use permit or site plan, and there's a few conditions, ones that a proposed development that will generate 150 or more directional trips during the peak hour or at least 500 trips per day or proposed development for a five acre or larger site, so.
Great.
I think it would fall under that for sure.
I don't think it's a deal breaker for your project, I just think it's something that's got to be addressed and, and make the whole planning commission comfortable that, you know.
Yeah, we can, we can look into a traffic impact assessment and, and come back with those details at the appropriate point. Yeah, I, one of the challenges with this site.
Right, and I agree. Other than, you know, I said, I think it's a challenging site and I, I bet Bob's team's going to have some fun grading it out and it'll be a pretty cool project when you guys are done.
Thank you. John, you want to add?
I just got a question. Buildings one and two, I noticed there's ADA ramps and stairs to get to those buildings from the parking lot. How is that? I'm just trying to visualize, are those buildings lower or higher? Do you have to come to the microphone box?
Yes, excuse me, Bob Verchev with Gosling Zuback. Buildings one are, one and two are anticipated to be below the road grade slightly and that's just a function of, you know, the way that hill is situated and getting a, a drive that's comfortable to park on, like we're showing. I mean, there is, you don't want to have a car that's sitting too far sideways up the hill trying to open your door. So we're, you know, managing that grade going up the hill and then when we get up to the, the buildings three and four, the, the heights are anticipated to be such that a fire lane is needed, so, you know, we have to maintain grades for those and getting into the buildings from the sidewalk. So there's a, there's a lot of parts that are moving around, trying to make things work, but, so yeah, buildings one and two are anticipated to be depressed slightly below that road grade, so we have to get people down to them and on the handicap spots, we're going to need like ramp type structure and then, you know, another stairway for a little bit farther up the hill to help people get in and out and access the building. So it's, it is early, we're still, there's still lots of details, you know, there's, architecturally, I think we're going to explore with the architects, maybe other ways to deal with the grade, so we're, we've got some, there's a lot, there's a lot of things we're looking at, so.
On your, there's four buildings, but then there's a small yellow building, is that a utility building or something?
That's just a, I put a placeholder for like a pavilion, picnic pavilion or some kind of.
Amenity or something.
Yeah, Will and his partner, Tom, wanted to, you know, have some amenities that, I mean, take advantage of the, the site and I think part of this actual permit, special use permit would require some type of open space type of activity area for residents too, so.
Any other questions? Bob, in your documentation for 154 unit apartment complex, do you feel that one dumpster corral is sufficient in that area for, to support 154 units in your, your documentation that you see?
Um, I guess I haven't analyzed the dumpster needs that in depth yet, but maybe it's a, a larger setting, I mean, more, more than one.
Yeah, for the people in building one, one and two, that would be quite a distance for them to come down.
And it's uphill.
Uphill too, yeah.
Yeah, that is something that we thought about. You know, we didn't want to, we've already driven Bob a little bit crazy through trying to figure the schematics of this out and so that is something that we thought too because, yeah, buildings one and two, it is obvious, like that is a long way to walk to take your trash out. So we're going to look at adding a second one that's closer to those two buildings.
If consideration two, if you're going to want trash and recycling, you'll need to build, build them wide enough, obviously, for a trash and recycling dumpster, as, as several of the other apartment complexes do here in town, so.
We, as John said, it's conceptual. I think if we go back a couple of years and we rezoned this, it's kind of what we conceived, you know, so I think what you're hearing is there's not any, a lot of opposition. I think you've got a good, good start and a good plan. You don't, you know, obviously not a yes yet, but it's not a no either. It's just a, it's a yes, I think you're on the right track to, to proceed, so. What's your timeline on, are you, I know you went to the town board and presented this as part of a TIF or something along those lines or brownfield. Are you waiting for some sort of an approval before you go much further or are you going to go ahead and proceed with your, your plans?
We're to go, we're going to go and proceed through the process with both the township and the brownfield authority. So we plan to come back hopefully for a resolution from the township board on the 23rd and then the brownfield authority meeting is on April 25th. With the, if that kind of all goes well through, then the county meeting would be sometime in May and then, you know, we haven't, you know, tomorrow I'll talk with Bob about next steps and we always contemplated a phase one, phase two. Phase one is the work from Bob to get to this point for a preliminary site plan and a conceptual review and phase two is taking it further to, to go forward with the special use permit and the process with this commission and, and the, the parallel reviews that go along with it.
All right. Well, obviously there's no action on our part tonight, so thanks for the information and I think you're, like you say, I think you're on the right track at what we saw in the future for that piece, so.
Thanks.
We'd like it in your brownfield money and we'll hopefully see you down the road. All right, well, at this point, our next item on the agenda is our second public comment. So if anybody from the public would like to come forward and comment on anything, now would be the time to do it.
We have public.
Our public is, our public is not jumping up to run to the microphone, so we'll go ahead and close that public comment and is there any other business come before the board tonight? Anything from the staff perspective? The board have anything else? Okay, items for our next agenda, we have master plan update and potential implementation projects, just for the, for the record, I will not be here, so Chris is going to get his first attempt at gavel.
Maybe I'm going back to Jamaica.
Gavel time over here.
No, man.
Yeah, you're not. You're not meeting anymore, so.
All right, well, I will be prepared.
Yeah, I would, I didn't know I was going to be gone, but I, for work calls a couple days downstate and that's Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Friday, so I'll be gone for that. So I'm sure you guys can, everybody else is going to be here for that meeting?
Yes.
You won't be here, but everybody, so we got one, two, so if anybody else, we should be fine with five, so. Anything else from the staff perspective?
No, just in what we're going to be talking about at, at April 24th study session is just really ideas on how to start implementation, looking at the ordinance and what adjustments we need to make and some, we'll also probably throw in some other, and it's just purely discussion at this point, some potential miscellaneous zoning updates, which we kind of every year like to throw in a few in there, we got some things.
We have a running list that's.
Yeah.
Keeps getting added to, so we get to tackle some.
We'll throw those out to you and again, just getting your feedback and seeing where you want to go on some of those items, so we'll look for, so basically it's just going to be some discussion. I don't expect anything of a very long meeting of any sort, so.
And remember the pedestrian asset, open house will be, you know, five to 6:30 before that meeting, so whoever wants to attend both, you have time to get a little dinner in between probably.
I just looked, I have a track meet that night, so I'll be, like tonight, I will be here on time, but I won't be there here for the other.
All right. Okay. If there's nothing else to come before the board?
Make a motion, will you, John?
Or adjourn?
John, I have this.